Oh, I don't know. I just sent the answer like on Friday. So. I don't know what I'm. You are gonna send me the ad, the unmarked up one.
Unmarked up?
The revised ad.
Oh, then I didn't do that.
I don't think so. You might have, but I didn't get it. Yeah, it might have been my.
Alright.
You can start or rewind.
What if like?
Okay, so let's, it's four of three.
Four of three.
Geez, I'm not even a right plan here. And we'll start this session, work session of the casting select board. And present are Amy Guto, Dan Leader, and Robert. Get it, get on. Alright. So we have um. A couple of additions to our agenda. Um, one is to discuss the. One. Safe patients. Sure, so just wanted to share them. And we need to be finished by four thirty. So that. A, a, it's a wide wildfire conversation. So. That's not here, so why don't we go ahead and start with the survey draft for the parking number? So I just, I just handed to you. And Jane, but if you've been reading. You can say Derek changes. Um, or suggestions like. Each of the parking changes enough for big app, or is it okay to leave it to the open? So if you have changes, will you consider to dance down to each? Um, and. Also, we want to express. That decision is something that's going to happen every time we make changes to an ordinance or update something. But in this case, it felt like it would. So next is um. Conversation about the trail line. So the trail line in Austin, Melbourne, that. I mean, thirty four million dollars was for trails around the state. And. I don't know how competitive that is, and we're assuming. But this might be a good time for us to try to get some of that money for the path. That they were talking from the golf course down to the. So they have the same way to get down there. Um, without people having to walk on sixty six.
There's that, there's no.
You're like, you go kind of run that, you go. There, there used to be a. You go downhill. Of course, across from Gary Breyer's.
Yes.
Yeah, probably, yeah, can go down on that side, that side.
Canterbury Ben has all those uh maple syrup lines.
Yeah, instead of walking down the middle house. Right, you go, you go down through the woods. You play, it's not quite through the woods, it's kind of on the road, it's between that house. And the, and the road, but kind of there, and then it goes back and. Then it kind of goes behind and.
But there's one at the lower part of the, it's behind the guard with that.
Right.
Under the Henry or who would be that.
And it would, and it would.
And then it'll come up.
Meet up with that, right, and come up, boom, and get people to the back shore safely, especially teenagers and children.
And it would mean that if you walk the loop. If you walk the entire loop, you'd be able to do the whole thing in that, in that, in a, in a city.
You, you could.
Yeah.
And um when uh when Helen Miller was working on. The twenty twenty celebration, um that was a part of what they wanted to do. And the law was fairly favor of it, um from what we understood. Um.
Roberta. I feel that's about fifteen years ago.
Yeah, we just have to fix it up.
Let's do it.
Well, okay.
Uh, it's just not the main thing.
That is, so.
The skeletons of it there wouldn't be that.
Yeah, so what we just need is to keep, have, have money for me. Is it, is it golf course property or is it conservation trust property? Part of it's.
It's easement, it's, it's an easement.
We should, part of it's private property, but we, as long as we keep it up, so I don't know, it's something we can think about. If we could get money for it, that'd be great.
Wait, there's, there's no. Apply for.
No, no.
Do we have debt on it, or do we know how the state is?
This, they, this just passed in November, so I don't think. Um, okay, so. Last year at budget time, we said that we wanted to select or to schedule. Um, a joint meeting with the library board and the school board and the state board to discuss um just budgeting in general. And so that none of us are to be surprised. When we get their budget. So if uh everyone is available, Karen is open to setting up a date, but all of us just sit down together.
Do you think they should come, do you think they should come up with like with it? I mean, that I never get budgeted, but like within a minute area. I mean, just so that we're, you know, so that we've got something um. To hang out to, I mean, like I, I, I just don't think, I don't think it should be a three wheeling conversation, it should be like, you know, we, that like.
What, when you guys discussed this last year, what was the goal for having this meeting, whether to. Review a, a pre-advanced draft of a budget or to have a collaboration?
Have a collaboration and say, this is, just so everybody's clear, we only have X. And so you come in and ask for.
Yeah.
You know, a lot more. It was more just a. Community building.
Yeah, it's just, and the, and the other thing is the endowment for libraries.
Right.
And so, you know. There, there's no shortage of money in the, in their, in their endowment.
That, we just wanted to talk about that, Jane, and I think a part of that is because the select board, and we never knows the school or budget until it is handed to us. Oh, and it would just be nice to have.
Especially if there's, if there's capital improvements that have to happen to the end of school. I mean, it, it, it gives us, it gives us an opportunity to digest it and think about how to present it to the residents if it, if it's a big number.
So um I've talked to Karen, she's open to doing that, and she would like to schedule something for Jane and Larry. Probably uh a work session.
Yeah.
And.
If it's, if it's early, mid-January, I'll have to call it.
We can.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, and then Dan, uh I did put down here the cost for the increased police presence.
Yeah.
Because I was.
Yeah.
Talking to different people, we were talking to different buildings and. She said that in um Stonington, they have a police presence thirty two hours a week. Right now, they pay ninety thousand dollars a year, and next year it's jumping to a hundred and twenty. And so we, we were talking about, did we want that much police presence or? Do we want to add time? And so we might add time, maybe not get there.
I mean, it, it, it's, to me, the issue is, how do we, how do we? Maybe this is the best way, but like, how do we change the conversation about the traffic, the traffic issues in town? Does it change because we have more police presence? Does it change because we're doing, we're, 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 we're doing ordinations about? Is it change because we get speed bumps? Is it change because we come up with a safety slogan? But I just think that the status quo. You know, if, if we don't, if we don't do something different. None is gonna change.
Right, no, I, I don't disagree.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we're talking about costs, we need to either talk to Lieutenant Dupree or um. Or Chief Deputy Birch to give us an idea, but we need to decide what. What we want, do we want five more hours a week? You know, they need to know. And the answer, whether they can fill it.
And, and if I remember correctly, anything we commit to, we're committing to for three years.
Um, if we can, I know if we commit to thirty two hours a week. That's the three years.
Yeah, I think you're right.
They would have to fire somebody. Especially for that position, so that would be at least three years, but I'm not sure that the other, but it might be probably.
Just add it in, and, and it's up to them whether they have the manpower, so it might be.
Right.
They say we can't just do five hours.
Right.
You know, they don't have it in there. So then we are looking at like a thirty two hours, so we really need to see where they are. And uh what the best options are. And do you want? Something for our next meeting that I can do, or do you want to wait, discuss this and?
I think it's a budget conversation, but if you could get something made for the first work session in January, that would be great.
Uh, when you say that, you're talking about the Hancock County Sheriff's Department, not State Police. And the other part of that question is uh since. There's an impression that a fair amount of our traffic issues are related to student fear. What uh should we expect the academy to contribute as a part of their higher uh commitment to the town?
Well, they, they do contribute right now.
Just.
That, what we have, and they, and I'm, we've just.
Okay, but turn the cost.
Well.
Are they in it for fifty?
If we were going to do a, a thirty two hour a week presence.
They would have to.
I think they would have to, that's the only way we could manage it, but I'm. I'm still not convinced that we need a thirty two hour presence in casting.
I mean, I. I think that the conversation should be safety first and, and money second. Like, I, I really think that we should say, okay, and, and, you know. If, if the police presence was more visible. I wonder like, you know, this, this year there were, I mean, I don't know, I know of three significant. Accidents, there was the one by the museum where the kid fell off the motorcycle. There was somebody who went in the canal, then there was somebody that field, here, carried Briar store, and I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering if. If we're starting out the epidemic year, or when we restart the epidemic year, and we can't do it right away, but if we did it for next year. I just, I just wonder if. If, if it's a well-known fact that we have increased presence, is it gonna create a more safe environment for the town? And if, and if that's the case, if, if we split the cost, and if it's, let's call it one thirty. And we split the cost at the school. I think it's money well spent on both parts, I mean, if we, if, if we've created a more, a, a, a safer environment in the town.
If we have to do it, but I was saying that you mentioned before, Dan, about wanting to bring in like a traffic consultant or something, so in my mind, I feel like.
Yeah.
Much like the comprehensive plan, I feel like if we're gonna start talking about anything related to traffic and safety. That kind of needs, I think it's own kind of mini comprehensive plan, like all the way, what do we want? Cause I feel like. If we go after just one thing or go after, I mean, we're not really coming at it with a comprehensive view of what our goals are. How we want to achieve the goals, which also affects budget, but you know, is there something that we?
I wonder if, I, I wonder if we call the, the DOT in Maine. You know, and just say, you know, do you offer any, any um assistance in evaluating traffic issues in, in the town?
Well, the, the Hancock County Sheriff's Department can bring out the strips. That we can put down in different places, we can do our own stuff using their equipment. We can put down the strips and. We can put them out in January in certain specific places and say, this is how many cars came by and this is how fast they were going.
Right.
And then we can put them back out in June. See what it's like then, or we could, we could do it as many times during the year as we wanted to, that will allow us to do that. And we can do it in August. And say, oh, the really increased. Situation or not, and, and so because. I don't disagree, we need to know what exactly. I, I understand that we're facing. You don't want accidents happening. Um, to do don't. But. I, I think maybe you can start with something in the background.
I can directly, I've been doing this twenty nine years, you can put speed bumps, people are gonna race between the speed bumps, so they're gonna slow down for the speed bumps and speed back up. That's what happens wherever I've seen them. Um, I find myself doing it on Waz or Cog Road, I, I go over the one bump, I'm back after twenty five miles an hour, but I'm gonna hit it, I'm not going fifty, of course. Uh, that, cause my suspension brother wouldn't like that in my truck much, but that's commonly what happens is people that are gonna speed, speed. I think the only way is a police presence that you control like the, the culture, so to speak. You have to have an expectation of getting caught, or those that are going to break the law are gonna break the law. That's, I think, the key, so you can do the slowdown signs, the problem with the slowdown signs are, the everyday citizen. After they've seen it three or four times, generally will now ignore. Okay, it's kind of like why they don't put children at play signs when people request them, oh, I have a child that plays out by the road, put up a sign, okay? Problem that is people become numb to those warning signs if they don't see the threat there. So if kids are always playing right by the road, then people are more apt to slow down, and that might catch the stranger's eye. But it's usually on a common road or where it's mostly residential for, you know, us, or for residential people that live here. It doesn't make a huge bit of difference, and that's why they stop doing it. For somebody from away, it might catch their eye first.
Let me see this uh question there. So, you know, especially early in fall, the students show up, the, the kids are racing up and down a battle at it.
Yep.
And. Even if. They did speed, even if they did speed up between speed bumps. I think the net result is that they're not gonna get the kind of speed that, 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 you know, I mean. I can hear them at my house sometimes, and we're down, I'm down close to Perkins, I, you can hear the trucks, and they have to be going forty five, fifty miles an hour. Because, to, to be, to be that loud, and so um. Um, John, do you think, is, is that inaccurate?
Well, I think the way Derek was describing it, like he's speeding up and slowing down, but he's not going over twenty five.
Right.
So that's weird.
Yeah, but, but like that'll happen, we had, e- even if that was the case. Where people got up to twenty five, that's already a home run in my book, because.
I agree, but are you gonna put those everywhere on every road?
No, no, I think, I think we do the problem roads.
And you're not gonna get the state, I don't think the state will let you put a raised table on like Battle Ave. Like on the state portion.
Yeah.
It would have to be after Main Street.
Yeah, but it's after Main Street.
That's probably like beyond like the president's house, I'm guessing is where they stop winding down through there.
But it's basically from the White House all the way to, to the schools, kind of like the, the, the speed zone.
Yeah.
Mark. A couple things, one, in terms of traffic counters. I don't know if we still take, somebody, somebody had them all over town last summer.
There was two.
Yeah, there was. There was some down on Mark Street. The other thing, you know, a really simple way to slow people down doesn't always work. I've got a series of stop signs on Battle Ave. Put a stop sign at Latour Street, put a stop sign at Main Street. You have to stop, put a stop sign at, at Pleasant Street.
Well, they're not on Main Street.
Part of me.
They want the stop sign on Main Street.
It's not, no, I understand, but you know, at, at least there's, there's a device.
That might not work, I, I mean, that might work, I mean, that's probably not an idea, it's gonna be annoying to the regular people, but yeah, it's gonna slow people down.
Everything that we talk about might not work.
Right.
The other thing is that in Dolphins by the hospital. There's one of those flashing lights, it tells you how fast you're going.
Yeah.
There's another one in. Sears going down the hill.
Yeah.
And I don't know about anybody else, but I see them, it reminds me to look at my speedometer and say. Oh, don't be an idiot, you're gonna get, you're gonna get caught here, especially when you're driving from Dolphins, you know, all of a sudden it's like.
Yeah, but, but those, those are areas, those are also areas where there's police.
That's, that's the key, so people have.
The key, you're, you're, you know, like I, I, there's that restaurant on the side that's closed, there's often police there.
Yeah, I just saw it last night coming back from New Hampshire, so, and of course I did slow down as soon as I see, otherwise I'd go thirty five through Searsport because. Twenty five is ridiculously slow through there. Let's not say, see, but um. But you mentioned the state police, just so you know, the state police said they don't have the manpower at time, they have something like forty openings or something like that. So they're not gonna be the people, it's gonna be the county that we would get if we do additional um.
Yeah.
Additional stuff.
I, I just asked a question, because, because when I heard this thing.
Right.
I'm sorry, guys.
Yeah.
How many hours do we have now? Eight a week. Eight, four weeks, four, sorry, four weeks, and do we, do we have?
Funds in our budget, I'm just coming up to speed on all these things, but do we have funds to? Hire or explore the possibility of hiring like a traffic consultant who could. Talk to us about all these different options, you know, the collaboration of signage or speed bumps or extra stop signs. Combined with some increased police presence, you know, from a professional experience point of view, because I think. All these ideas are good, but one of them alone is not gonna solve.
We, we had a meeting before the election, where the state police and the sheriff came to MMA. And you, you know, and, and Peter, their security guy, was there.
He was doing.
Yeah, and he said that, you know, this, we're in the unique situation, this is the only university town.
Right.
In the state of Maine. That doesn't have police, and so we're, we're already like in a very, very unique situation.
That, well, you know, I think we should just call, I'll talk to like Pete Cofflin from Local Road Center. Maybe he has some ideas for that, I hate to do a whole study thing, cause we can do a study, but they're gonna come up with the same ideas we have, whether or not they work or not. It's probably not gonna give us the information we want. It would, but that information may be free out there, and then if we could lock in, then we can explore the cost, what we'd like to do. But I think Pete, you know, that's, he deals with local governments all the time, that's his job down there and his staff, and maybe he has some insight into different. You know, devices um to, you know, use. One of the things Dan is thinking of uh with the state, uh with the sheriff's department, what they told us is they have a info sign. And it has a speedometer built into it, and maybe that's what we want to reserve that for like when the kids are coming back to college, to have that welcome to Castine. You know, speed is an, or something, you know, crafty, cause I always enjoy reading the signs on the side of the interstate, you know. Watch your speed, we're watching you, you know, and maybe it'll show you how fast you're going. Cause one of the things that um the sheriff's department and state police told us at that meeting, if people weren't tuned in, was when you put up the other ones. Have it maxed out, you don't want to show them that they're going seventy miles an hour, so it becomes a contest, like, hey, I got that up to seventy. You want it to be, as soon as it hits thirty five, it says, slow down in thirty five, or whatever, or five over, and then it just says, slow down. Cause otherwise they use it to see who can get the record for the fastest reading on the sign. And I can see that happening on Battle Ave, you'll be like, yeah, the cars are going a hundred, they're trying to bury them.
I love that idea, Derek, oh Bobby, please.
No, we're just gonna second the notion that we start.
Please.
Start cutting, cutting, bedding, not to take a twenty dollar bed percentage of students that's speed. That percentage is no greater than percentage of full-time residents.
Yeah, I agree.
I'm trying to understand, the limitations is, is really hard.
Okay.
That might connect to us and say, you know, stop signs at a intersection is a great idea, on Battle Ave. If you had a stop sign at Perkins and the Dockawando and uh Terrateen and, you know, and Pleasant and Latour. It, I don't, it might, might not make difference.
That's the smartest idea I've heard.
Somebody brought up to me the idea of putting a three-way stop at Stevens on Main Street. We've never had a three-way stop there. And putting on there, murder.
Oh, coming up to Main Street?
Yeah. Putting on there, and I don't know, well, you know, but it would against what, it would, it would be a mediator between the top of the hill block.
Because I'm the later one, it's called.
I'm not sure, so in the audience, I can remember this, but years ago, when the stop sign was put in at Court Street in Maine. It was not, it was declined to be, rejected to be a four-way stop sign. Because of, as I recall, because of the delivery trucks and the boat trailering that needs to be done going up the hill.
That's right, that is true.
That might occur as well, something like Stevens, because once those guys get moving, they're not speeding, they're just trying to not go back.
Yeah, so the trucks couldn't do.
Things like that, there's a really specific, like, practical. Those considerations that had to be made, and that's why that doesn't.
And we, we dealt with that on.
Does, does anyone who's a, a long timer here can give us information on? How they did the speed bumps on the back shore road, like I, I wonder what the background to that is, what, how long have they been there? When, how, how did that get approved, you know?
They're in two thousand.
And they've been there, oh, no, but it wasn't like, it wasn't like.
Yeah.
It wasn't like we had to get a permit from the D. Those are significant speed bumps.
Um.
Yeah.
Karen might know.
Yes.
Norman. I will say that. Um, down curve, that's what we're, we're our cottages. Uh. There have been accidents there in the past before those speed bumps were installed, some of our cars got hit. Uh, the telephone pole there got sheared almost in half. My cousin who was parked down and from Brad's house, his truck got knocked out into the road at two AM once. And those have not happened since the speed bumps were put in. There have been no accidents, definitely. But there were some serious in the past.
Okay.
And just so you know, I'm not saying we shouldn't necessarily do a traffic study, I, I'm saying we should talk to Peter Cofflin, cause he can probably give us the information that we. Need to discuss, okay, these are the things that have worked in other places, these aren't. Cause the little mini roundabouts. Work well too, where they have like, basically it's a tree growing in the middle of the road, and then you. You know, you have to turn, so you have to slow down and make a turn, although I will say, I have it myself, by myself gaming the system. To see how quickly I can do that little turn through there, I know, I know. Um, but I'm just saying, over the years, huh, am I a speeder?
No, 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 who's Peter?
Uh, uh, Peter Cofflin is the director of the Maine Local Road Center, which is a division of the DOT. Which is there to, they offer training and advisory information. And it's federally funded uh because each state has a local transportation center, and that's what they're there for, is to. Advise us on transportation issues, and if he can't, well, he'll tell you what does and doesn't work, and but. I think he could also steer you on, oh, this is the person to hire for this, because this is what they've done, you know, or this happened in a certain community. Rather than us just going out to bid in some random company, and then they throw together a textbook that says, oh, you can do this, this, and we're like, yeah. We, we want to know what we should do, not, you know, what is out there to do, you know?
And are you good to reach out to him?
Yeah, actually, I just got an email from, actually mail today, who welcomed me to Maine, so it's, that's why he was fresh in my head, was, I literally had an envelope, I just opened up before the speeding. And I think that he could uh do it.
Well, why don't we start there with that conversation, and then we can see, because it would be nice to have somebody help us put together a comprehensive plan, like you said. With lots of little parts that would do different things.
Yeah, and I, and I know he's gonna be able to tell you what works and what doesn't. I mean, uh, what's been tried or anything else, or what the downfall or anything else is for.
True. Thank you.
No, he probably even knows what police don't like or like too.
That, that's, that's important to know.
Yep.
Okay. Um. So. The next thing we say, conversation. Do you like to talk to us about safe conversation?
You, I'm Charlotte tonight, and I really appreciate the invitation. Talk to you guys and talk to those who are here. Who are present about um. To start with, about something that we're doing at the Main Street Church. People in this room are part of that. You might know that we uh have gone through a process over the last year, uh. Uh. Rigorously working towards an open and affirming covenant, what that is, is specifically is around the LGBTQ. Community, making the church a safe and, I mean, place, but it's bigger than that, it's really. Making the church a place for anybody, no matter where they are on their journey, who they are. What they look like, where they come from, what they think about. Um, and we've gone through that process and achieved the covenant, but what we agreed as, as a congregation was, it's not just about reaching. Um, the end result, it's about who we are and who we are. And. Not just a clap on the door, but it's actually a sense of self. About how we act open and affirming and how we are together. And then how we outlook, outlook to the community at large. Um, I, and the reason I think we can talk about this is that what we've implemented at the church is a methodology. For connection and relationships that is all things. Something that I've worked with um. Professionally in the last ten years with the founders and the research scientists, um, relationship experts, Carville. Carville Hendricks and Helen La Kelly Hunt. Who have written books that have been on Oprah and done all the things, but have also uh created uh an imprint for social and community connectedness. Using a methodology, not just a bunch of ideas and concepts, but a methodology for connecting. And I, I say connecting very intentionally. It's not a communications methodology. That communicating can only happen when you're connected. And with communities and people, especially with polarization like it is, nothing happens unless there's a connection between people and a sense of safety and of hearing and being heard of recognition and acknowledgement of differences, a celebration of differences. Anyway. So we're, we're uh committing to the implementation of, or the embrace of safe conversations at our church. Talking with Gil and others, lots of others in this community about other entities wanting to get, to, to bring that into their um community as well. And especially for such a time as this, this is a time of huge rupture, uh no matter what. It's not about a vote and it's not about um uh politics or uh whatever's happening in the, in the larger world. It's about the fact that people are struggling with loneliness and disconnection and polarization, and that shows up in our conversations. So we're doing this at our church. I've talked with lots of people, including Roberta, Johanna, um, um. Of course, Bobby and Rufer, Gil and, and the um other people about, well, shouldn't we be, and it's not just here. People everywhere are saying, we all need this. This is not about just like relationships. This is about how to, to fundamentally change the way we are as a community so that we're ready. Because we don't know. We never did. And we should, but it's best to, it's certainly in the um, it's certainly in the water we drink that we've got to invest in our communities now. And invest in the way our communities get along and operate um so that we're ready for all the issues. So um I'm here to, to, to introduce safe conversations, to put it on the table for this town. Um, as a um a potential um investment in something that is different that we've done as a town before. And that, you know, I like, kind of like the word Dan's uh brought up a couple of times about having a slogan. That sloganizing is not good necessarily unless it is a real reflection of who we are. And what means and, and, and a reminder of our speed. And um so, you know, it could be that becoming a, a, a town that practices interpretations is a good thing for businesses, for uh our interactions, for our problem solving and decision making. And so if that is something that we like to talk about, I'm here to talk about it. If it's something we like to dip our toes into, I would be happy to introduce the methodology.
Because I, I, Rupert is here for two years, I'm here for one year. Amy's new, but like as we bring up issues, whether it's a budget issue or the firehouse or the traffic, we could go through all the issues that we work on. You know, they often trigger responses from people in the community. You know, I'm not judging their responses, but you know, people have strong feelings about, about the town and the direction of the town. And I, I, I think it would be enormously helpful if, if we could, you know, uh introduce, you know, uh safe conversation or a different level of respect, especially now with the world so difficult. I mean, it's more important than ever that in our little town, we treat everybody respectfully, we listen to each other. We try to do our best because that's all we have here, you know. And so I, I'm really in favor of, you know, I really don't think incorporated into like town government, but I think it's really important that we, that we really work hard because we, we have some, we have some really difficult issues that we're gonna be facing in the next year or two. You know, whether it's infrastructure or, you know, road safety. I mean, we, I mean, we could pick, like, there's a whole bunch of things I could bring up, but I mean, there, there's a lot of difficult issues that we're gonna be, that we're gonna be facing. And, and we have to face them in a way that's very respectful to everybody.
And there's a lot to know about that, about um, about what happens um. When levels of anxiety are heightened, what happens to human brains. Um, and the fact is two things. Um. No matter what, the greatest asset we have in this community is our differences. And the other great thing is that no matter what our differences are, we are one hundred percent aligned on the one thing that matters the most, which is this town. That's really unique and especially when it comes to polarization, because it's hard in, in really big, you know, I always think about, and many of you know this, when you're thinking about making a difference like, you know, that's a mile wide and an inch deep. You're just trying to get an inch deep, like a couple of different behaviors. It's, it's a diff, it's impossible to say that the people on one end of that mile spectrum and the other have a shared, a shared vision or direction or love or passion or hope. And we do. We have a shared vision, which means that if we have the methodology to deal with, to operate around and connect beyond and around and in celebration of our differences, then all we have left is our alignment. And that's gonna make the issues so much easier to deal with. But you can't, you don't just say, okay, let's do this. It's, it in the heat of the moment and with passion and especially at difference, like different opinions play out. There, nobody knows how to connect. Nobody knows how to. It's, it's not perfect. So that's why having a methodology, and I use the word methodology, but we mean process. A set of guidelines, a roadmap, which we decide as a town, not all the time. But this is gonna be a tough issue. Let's use the dialogue process. Uh, and so, so, and anyway, I think you're, I think you're right. I think we're very, very fortunate in this town um to have such a passion. And we're also fortunate to have such differences.
So Charlotte, uh my understanding is that you, you could facilitate this for people upstairs?
Sure.
As many as a couple hundred or as many as nine thousand.
Feel like I'm sitting there.
We're gonna be importing people from away.
Um, and, and, and is there a cost associated? That's up to the council. Um, I, I, I have a visceral reaction to making there be a barrier for entry to connecting. So unless you guys want to do something different, like, I would say, no, there should be absolutely no cost. The only commitment is to come and abide. Um, and do it in a, in a series than to, you know, commit.
And how many, how many parts in a series would you?
It depends on how, I think we need to have more of a discussion about what we want to get out of it.
Okay.
Um, and, you know, we, we at the church are doing a two, a two-part learning. Not just learning, it's practice. It's not just, um, it's, it's really dealing with the way that people operate, but also getting in and practicing. As you know, Roberta and as Julie knows, and as the Vots know, um. We, it's, it's really a, a matter of getting the ideas, but then really getting into dialogue practice.
So Charlotte, do you like, I'm just gonna throw this out just to pop my head. So, okay, so we're, we're looking at the waterfront. I'm just using it.
Yeah.
And there are people that believe in climate change. There are people that don't believe in climate change. Uh, there are people that want to leave the waterfront the way it is. There are people that might have a grand vision of the waterfront. So, but everybody wants a nice waterfront. You know, like, so do you use like a real issue as a, as a, as a, like, would it be helpful like if we, if we said, okay, these are the four most sensitive issues that we're dealing with right now? And we practice with them? Or do you like it to be more?
No, I think for sure. Um, and, and yet there is some learning that I think needs to happen first.
Of course.
Um, and so, so some absorption of, of the ideas. And we would do that using a little more of a generic approach, but still very specific to each and every. It would be specific. There's no, it's not role playing. That doesn't work.
Sure.
It has to be very um intentional and, and um authentic. Um, so I would say that if we did a series that had first to do with learning the skills and then we start to layer in uh groups who are working on, on different issues, then you could have people drop in if it's somebody, if it's a group who's really passionate about the waterfront and, you know, the, the one thing that's just super important is to make sure that we have representation of, and I don't think that's hard in this town, but to have representation of different ideas and thoughts and um. And, you know, I, I really feel strongly that we start in a place of understanding who we are as a community before we jump into the polarizing issues. So um I, I would say that maybe we have a session or two on uh that are, that are geared towards learning the skills, but also geared towards a little bit broader uh i- ideas, broader, broader issues, say. For strict challenges um that aren't, aren't quite as, as um passion um driven. But we, and we can decide that. And we can also, I would really recommend we get input from the community. What are the issues that you'd wanna work on? What are, what? Or maybe um input from a smaller group, the people who showed up at these meetings. Just brainstorm, throw down some things on, on paper and.
No, I'm just kind of like, I am shaking it, it's kind of imagining how my doll would look organized and, you know, and, and carry that.
Mark?
Really enjoying, listening to you. I'm thinking about, we, we have three major constituencies. Those of us who live here. We have those who go to school here part of the year. Then we have our largest group, the people who pretty much pay for both of what we have in town. We have those same. Those of all the summer residents. That I hear, those people often, yeah, it's great, yeah, you know, our taxes pay for everything, but we can't, we don't have a voice. Something like this might provide a forum to have.
Such a great idea, great thought.
Our forum, yes.
But I like, like, yeah, and I think that thinking in terms of constituency is great, but it's also for every constituency, every person represented and it has a different, has a cross over. So I think I'm also hearing from you that this isn't an agree with the, what the output of that is that it's not one and done because it's not something that you can teach a. You don't wanna make this, make anything we do be, increase the us in them. Like, oh, you know, in the winter they do these sessions on safe conversation. Now they're talking different and thinking about, you know, what is that? So um it would be something that we would want to either open up just in Zoom and not in church, we're doing it on Zoom. And my mom and Dottie and Dabney, they come in on Zoom and I mean, they wouldn't miss it, right? They're, they're really into it. It's working. Um. I do workshops, do safe conversations, work with people on Zoom all the time. It really does, it's. So there is that option is that opening up a, a screen upstairs that makes it so that we can match up people in practices who are on Zoom while we're practicing in person. Um, and then also to be sure that we don't just think short-sightedly, but then, but say, we're gonna do this. We're gonna do a series in, in the winter and then a series in the summer. And then, uh, you know, maybe we do dialogue, group dialogues about specific issues that become self-propelling. And they're self-propelled, self-managed, but their commitment is to use the dialogue processes and ideas. So you do start, as Dan say, says, you do start to see the, the results of a new way of being. And, you know, and again, I really wanna be specific. This is about connecting. So it's about, I was reading, it's about building community uh um. And instead of moving forward fast despite the differences, we're moving forward maybe a little less fast. It's so funny, the metaphor of the, of the speed bumps and the stop sign and but we're moving forward a little less fast, but with such better connection and such better um, I don't know, sense of community. So you are available in January? Yeah, I'm gonna go to, and I really, this is so important. Um, I'm, I'm gonna, and it's becoming more challenging. So I think, actually, I I'm gonna be in Africa doing this work uh the first week in it. As of now, I'm headed back to South Carolina, straight from Africa. But it's, but if this become, if this is something important, and I'll be there until the first of April, but this is important. We can build a, a if this is something we want to embrace, uh we can put together a schedule. I'm gonna come back. I need to come back anyway. We'll come back around this and then.
And to be effective, how, how frequent should they be?
Um, well, you know, we, at church, we did one, it's so seasonal, you know, at church we did one and we had this great turnout. And two weeks later, town band had been the same night and we were friends, we'd been the same night. Um, and free dinner at the academy happened and so our numbers dwindled. So we have to just be really intentional about what's actually happening in town to know.
Okay.
Because you could say two weeks apart, if everybody could be there, right? But a month apart, because everybody could be there a month apart, is far more efficient.
I think it's important too that if we do it in the spring, I really want to involve them in a, as much as the students, you know, as much as the students, the faculty and the staff would be interested. That's their decision, but it definitely to them. And then if we did it in the summer, and then if we did it again in the fall and gotten, you know, new stu, new students or the students that couldn't do it this spring or whatever as well. And along with townspeople. I think that connection between the students and the townspeople is really important.
And so there's one more thing, uh which is that this should never be attached to a single person or people. Um, and so what we do and have done all over the world is train facilitators. So especially in the academy environment, it might be something really interesting for the town to sponsor. Um, the the development of safe conversation, dialogue, whatever you wanna call it, facilitators. So then, and I'd be happy to be, to do that and have done it uh with hundreds and hundreds of people. Um, and then it wouldn't, I wouldn't need to be here and neither would. It could, it could take on a life of its own in all sorts of different um groups. And then you have, also then you have the facilitator capability. So let's say you had a meeting that was happening. It's gonna be really tough to bring in a facilitator who's going to guide the, the dialogue process. It's just something to think about as a long-term, uh maybe.
Very good to do it this frame.
Okay.
That'll be a lot of fun. So we will figure out that down to town. And if we want to flesh it out in terms of the specific parts of what would be taught when and how, uh that, that just is a conversation. Let, let me know and I'll.
Is there, is there anything online or through the organization that people could connect or look back on YouTube to see a facilitation underway and see kind of what the vibe is and see something like.
Sure. Well, there's, so Google safe conversations, number one. Number two, Carville Hendrick, I can even jot this all down for you. Carville Hendrick and Helen La Kelly Hunt are the names of the um, the the people who founded this work. They wrote a book, you may or may not remember, back in the late nineties, made it called Getting the Love You Want. That went, that went platinum, whatever it was. And, and that's what landed them on, or him on the Oprah show. He was on it, I don't know, twenty-five times as the real, the specialist on relationships. He was on it, I don't know, twenty-five times as the real, the specialist on relationships. Cause this is just a new way, a dialogical way of being related. It started in the therapy office, and it was just changing the way that couples specifically were, um, were working through coupledom. Um, when I got involved, it was ten years ago, when this pair of, of, of famous relationship people were challenged to, uh, by their peers to pick a city and do what we're talking about doing, you know, really at, at the government, at the congregations, at the, you know, the support systems, and that was in Dallas, that's where I was in God. And, um, so that, and that's also how I know how to work. So I work very closely with the, with the first responders and the vets groups and the schools. And now I'm working hundred percent in Africa, um, doing the same work, uh, for them.
What country are you going to?
Well, we're in, um, I'm, we are, we are opening up the Center for Dialogue Africa, um, beginning of January, should be this week, but my visa didn't come, so we're having to post one on it, and that's why I'm glad I could be here today. Um, but, um, Liberia is where, and, and not by accident. Liberia was, uh, you know, the, our first partner as American, as the US, Liberia was our first partner. And it's a mess. It's a story of how dialogue is helping there. Also in do, I'm doing work in Sierra Leone, Kenya, Benin, South Africa, Rwanda, um, and growing. Um, so as part of the Hudson.
If you could share that information maybe with Robert or Derek, then they could.
Also, by virtue of our, our church stuff, they, Johan has ordered, or and Howard has ordered, and it's sold, sold out, but the book that, most recent book that Parville and Helen have written called How to Talk With Anyone About Anything. And it's on the main table at Compass Rose. I recommend.
Thank you, thank you so much for being here, and, um, good question. And, um, Doug did, I owe you an apology, but thank you for hopping in early. Um, do you wanna talk about housing?
Well, I think that we should plan a meeting when we can have, the Genesis Fund man come and talk to us about the program.
Do you mind Johnny getting to come and let's do that?
I think we should have Greg, that you talked to also, come and develop some sort of workshop where we go through the information that you and I have, that's sort of been part in a public forum, because I don't think it's fair that you and I discuss it and then nobody else has.
And now, nobody else.
The information, and then whatever conclusions we reach, it's like consensus, because it has happened outside of the home.
Uh, Doug, the Genesis Fund, my understanding is that, that's grant funding, or is that borrowed money?
So the Genesis Fund is simply a group that has been retained by Main State House to work between the towns, developers, and the Main State House.
Okay.
So they're the, the facilitators, they sort of facilitate the meeting, they listen to where we're at, and then they try to fit it into a program of Main State House and Congress. And it does fit the existing parameter of one of the programs they currently have. That's the group, they're the people that talk to Main State House about the special needs of an individual situation. Am I correct in saying that, Robert, in that way?
That was silly.
And there was so much information coming that day from him to Roberta, that I couldn't absorb all.
It was like a fire.
But I, I, I guess, you know, it, it seems to me that the funding in some ways is not the most difficult piece of the puzzle.
The funding is the most difficult piece of.
It is, yes. Okay, cause so Kevin said that, I wasn't sure, but, um, I, I'm, I'm very, I think I told you the day that we went, I went out to see your place, that I've worked with the Rural America Fund, it's not called Rural America. And they're working with, uh, funding, um, um, you know, workforce housing, affordable housing across the country. And the, I'm, I'm, I'm very good relationship with the, the vice president, senior vice president. Now she offered to, um, um, she's in New York City, uh, she could zoom into a meeting. Uh, she said she'd be willing to come up, but, you know, so if it, if it's, if, if, if maybe the first step is to get the Genesis, Genesis Fund here, and second step is if funding is gonna be the, the obstacle, we can get a funding expert here to, to give us some feed, feedback on, you know, interest rates and terms and grant options, because they do this all over the country.
So what, what he told us that day is there's different programs available today, and two of them I really clicked on. One of them was a funding for Main State Housing where they kicked in, I think it was eighty-five to a hundred thousand dollars per unit. And then these units would be sold to people. And if they kept them for thirteen years, that equity change between the time they bought it and when they sold it thirteen years later, would be their nest. And that was extremely interesting to me, because you want somebody to have a vested interest. If I rent somebody a trailer for X amount of dollars a month, they have no interest in the trailer. They're only thinking month to month to month. And really, that's not healthy. What's healthy is when, when somebody's in a living environment where they have pride in their ownership. Ownership is the key phrase. And they realize that there is an aspect, they're growing, like everybody else who has a house all across America. So Roberta, I didn't know that that program was there. And as I said right from the very beginning, when I came to talk to them, I haven't been able to figure this out for ten years, we need your help. We all agree we need housing, we just have to figure out.
No, it was, I, I think, I think it's, I think for next year, you know, I think, you know, if I was gonna prioritize the work that we're doing, certainly in the top five, is how do we, how do we deal with the housing prices and, and the testing?
So I wanna, Derek, is this something that we can, can sort of set up as a, I'm gonna use the word workshop, but as sort of a housing meeting where we bring in the housing specialists and, and we bring in Johnny in from Genesis, and maybe even.
And Finnegan.
And Finnegan from Rural America, and.
We figure out the gender and times, I don't know how well they'll blend together. But if you have a, a topic, let's say, I don't know how long each one would be, let's say it's an hour and a half or something, I don't know. And you make it, and we could make it our little workshop. I mean, when I go to mine, we talk about five different subject matters, and sometimes we talk about ones that are different, and one leading before the other sometimes repeats a little bit what the other one did, but it's usually good training, so I think we can do anything like that. If you're talking about building value, the value-added type of stuff, so we get a lot of ideas.
And we can put it out to everybody in the community, and then anybody else who might be interested in helping with the housing development or doing housing development could come and learn too. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Mark?
Uh, and one of the biggest challenges, I, I've heard it from, you know, different, uh, different groups, different people in the town. And then one of our greatest challenges is our zoning, because people who live off neck are, where we have two and a half acres on it, or two acres on it, which was precluded, inability to develop anything. And encounters, people say, I don't wanna see large-scale development happen off neck. Yet we have no space on, even though the town, the state suggested that this is where we have to grow the town, where we don't have any water, you know, all the challenges that we have. But I think one of the early, early conversations that needs to happen among people in a, in a safe conversation is about, we know we need housing. Where can we possibly build it? Because we have, we have a structure right now that doesn't allow so much housing to be built. Until you break down that barrier, we can talk forever about where to do it and how to do it, but it won't go anywhere if the density question and not be addressed.
Mark, we, we do have this unique situation where Doug handles, is, is ready, pre-approved. I mean, I, I mean, I, I completely agree with what you're saying. And we do have this unique situation where if the funding was there, we've got the developer, we've got the, we've got the pads, like, I was over there. I mean, how many units are, are, are possible, Doug?
Well, we could build another fifteen units starting in a month or two.
I mean, fifteen units, which is already a huge impact on the town. And, and, but I'm not saying, I'm, but I'm, but, but I'm agreeing with you that we need more. But at least we, at least we, you know, if we could, if we could do that in an effective way and show the town that we did that well, people would be more open. Wait a second, this looks really nice. It's, 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 uh, you know, a very respectable, it's not an eyesore. It's, 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 they rented in a minute, or however we're gonna do it. Uh, I think that that, that, that will be like a real springboard to do anymore.
And, and I don't disagree, the zoning is an issue, it's something that the conference is, we're committing with doubt. Um, but it's also something that the larger town needs to have a conversation about as a town, because we have to decide, do we want to keep that zoning and keep a more rural feel? Or do we want to have denser places out on the off neck?
I mean, there, there are little towns, a lot within the square, as we all know. You could build a hundred houses there, and nobody in town would see them.
Exactly.
And people need to understand, you know, why are there any amendments to it? And by the way, you definitely need another fire council to do that.
Definitely.
And then the other thing, Robert, somebody mentioned was a TIF or TAF?
TIF.
The TIF.
TIF district, yeah.
Do you wanna explain that to the other selectmen?
No. Derek, I don't know.
Well, I don't think a TIF would work out in a rural situation, unless the town is going to own the infrastructure stuff, but normally that happens. Right, increment financing, so basically if you're building sewer water lines and stuff, that, that captures that money, and it goes into a fund to actually pay for those infrastructure extensions or improvements. So if we're extending like water and sewer lines off neck, then that would be something similar to it. Ultimately, where you get the savings and the controversy, a lot of times you hear from people TIFs, cause I did a pretty meaningful one in Naples, is that they complain, well, that otherwise those tax dollars would have gone into tax relief or into the valuation. That valuation doesn't show up when set in a tax rate, you're still taxed, it goes into this fund to pay for those improvements. In Naples, for instance, people would always complain, oh, well, you're concentrating on the causeway too much. And I'm like, yeah, the fireworks, the water line, all that is being paid for with new money generated from new investment in that area and to offset it. Otherwise, that investment wouldn't have happened in the first place. So that's the key with that is, but, you know, there's some, they used to have them where they would actually give the money to the developer. That's generally not how it works, that's a credit enhanced agreement. And that kind of, they pay it and then you reimburse them for the expenses that they paid in. That generally does not happen anymore, and only in industrial if it does, because of the major investments in equipment and job creation, it's tied to a lot of that stuff. Um, so, um, the, the way that you gain though, just so you know, is that when you do have a TIF, that new valuation gets sheltered from the state revenue sharing formula, from the school funding formula, through the state, through county tax. So ultimately, you get higher valuation, you end up losing state funding for education, paying higher county tax on it. So in that instance, they start doing a formula that shows, okay, this is what you'll have in the fund, this is how much you're saving from having, you're still getting your money, but it's going towards paying for that dedicated infrastructure, whatever it is. But here's what you're actually saving, so the rest of the taxpayers are kinda saving. Cause everybody thinks, oh, you get more valuation, that means, you know, uh, you know, less property tax on everybody. Not always the case, because a lot of times you're paying the county tax, you know, the school subsidies go down, I don't think we get a lot of school subsidies here, but, um, but, so that's part of the whole system of gain.
That's interesting.
So you get it, you kind of spend it twice, is what I would say.
Okay, so Derek, why?
Called bond payment, so that's a major thing, so you borrow it to do that stuff, and then you pay for the bond over time with it.
Why don't we talk about, if we wanted, about doing some sort of a workshop?
I mean, I, I, I almost feel like this is such a big issue, like, I almost feel like we need to have a, like, a separate work session. Only, uh, obviously, because, because it, it's really, it's a complicated subject, and it's, 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 it's challenging.
And, you know, Mark's right, and, and we have to change our ordinances. But I think when you're trying to make a change, like where we're talking about doing, it's how many tools you have in the toolbox, and this is us learning the tools. So even though it may not be the, the bigger win everybody thinks coming, sometimes when you have a shovel ready, or a project ready to do this right now, that's, it's good practice to figure out, to learn from. And you get more than just be holding that, that info, everybody knows, because I don't remember, you know, half the stuff I learned sometimes, till I'm like, oh, I do know that. But that, so I think having three different people speak about this, and will, everybody will pick up a little nugget here or there and say, yes, we can.
Fantastic.
You know, and.
Just gonna throw the thought, it's, it's, in a recent experience I had, uh, we did this, uh, Bacon Research Center in Onyanta, New York. And the state and the city of Onyanta, uh, uh, put together. It's, it's like a, a very tasteful looking apartment building with, with retail downstairs and apartments upstairs, and it was funded with federal money and state money and, you know, and city money. But it was, it was a, you know, I mean, a, a game-changing, um, um, uh, project for, you know. So, you know, people were doing this all over the country.
Yeah, the whole.
I was getting hungry for a second, we were saying bacon.
Um, so, so Doug, let's, let's see if we can find a January time, and, and we might have to do a special session, and he's like, what? Uh, but we, we could do it just during a regular work session and call it a housing workshop.
Yeah, totally, it is.
We wanna do that, but, but.
Hey, I'll, I'll, uh, if you could just, um, pick a couple of possible dates, and I'll let, and I'll write them like, get you a decision.
So we'll get it.
It doesn't have to be January, you know, I just wanna get this all.
No, no, we need, we need to get this, we need to get our.
It's, it's better to do it in January.
One of the things that I'll, I'll point out, John brought up the TIF, because when I built a building I built, all of a sudden now it's taxed at thirty-six hundred dollars a year. So I built it, I'm barely there in the threshold, and now I've got a thirty-six hundred dollar a year tax bill. And so he pointed out the fact that if it wasn't a TIF, that some of that money would come back to, to increase the value of that building, whether it be put in reserves for something or for something else, but the money would, some of that money would roll back in, like you said, without having a negative impact on the town's tax picture. But he's, he's done it in this state, and he has a lot of experience. But he really needs you guys to invite him to come, he doesn't wanna have me.
No, no, I, I, we, we're happy to do it, Doug.
Then we'll figure out some dates.
Did. Did you have a chance of calling Mark yet too? The number I gave you? Not you.
No.
Mark wise and John.
No, but I will, yeah, we, we should bring him in.
Yeah, I mean, he may have, uh, you know, some ideas for you too, that I think would be good.
All right, um, the final thing on our agenda.
Yeah, it's, at the end, two, two little things, that's.
Okay, so we, we should do, uh, was, we were gonna talk about the elm tree ordinance. And we had a situation where, um, a, a non-elm tree had to be taken down, and, um, so we're just, I think we were wondering if we need to maybe rename the elm tree ordinance to be shade tree ordinance, or the, or something like that.
I did a little, a little bit of homework on this, um, and throughout the body of the ordinance, uh, the phraseology is, for the care and maintenance of the, its elm trees and significant streetscape trees.
Yeah.
Those two terms appear at least seven times together throughout this ordinance. Uh, when it comes to the section seven, responsibility for diseased or damaged elm trees, uh, it discusses the owner's requirements, if it's an owner, probably owner, versus if it's in the public tree area, which is anywhere between thirty-five feet from the center of the roadway on either side, that's considered the public tree area. That's basically what we're talking about. So, uh, in the instance of the manning oak coming down and having inwards for that come to our three committee. Essentially, um, my feeling is that it was implied that with all of the wording here being oak trees and significant streetscape trees throughout the document, it's implied that a significant streetscape tree would be included. It's something that the town was.
No, and, and.
That has, that has apparently become a point of debate.
It was a danger.
Because of maybe that one little section here that doesn't mention streetscape trees.
Well, then.
Which makes the ordinance a little complicated, I think.
Perhaps we can have a conversation about adding street streets. I can even say that, street state trees to that section of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, because my understanding is that the tree was, was a danger as well, you know.
Very much. We got that down when we did.
Right, you made a good call, thank you. Uh, we just.
Bill was the one who made the call. I mean, the tree had lost a third of itself in a windstorm, uh, earlier in the year, in the spring. One of the most lonely storms we've had. Uh, and it was evident that it was split down the middle of the tree. Once that piece departed, luckily it falls house. We took a look at it and, and clearly Bill said it needs to come down. When it came down, I have some video of how he took it down. It's quite incredible watching him do that. Uh, the entire hardwood of the tree was pelt. The hardwood of a tree is the strength of the tree and stuff. Spinal column essentially of a tree, all the way down to the ground. You, you could have used it in your garden for, for. It was, it was that. So the tree was being held up by its, uh, its, its vascular tissue. Yeah.
Um, so Derek, is this something Elm Tree Committee to look at and make a recommendation?
I think so. I mean, I don't know how we generally do it.
We can't.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, Kastin, I've had like, I've had committees that were made up of microcommittees called ordinance rewrite committees. Sometimes you'd send it off to them.
Oh, wow.
And, uh, so, but we don't always need another committee. Don already knows some of the redundancies, they're the ones working with it. I'd certainly sit in and, uh, but I don't think this.
Tree committee experts on legal documentation.
Right.
Okay.
I have some language or whatever that I can share with you too, based on dangerous trees and stuff like that. It might be helpful.
On that note, however, um, as you may know, we have a, a grant that was awarded from the state for twenty thousand dollars for planning and indication for replanting and assessment of our woodland areas and, uh, tree, tree town and, uh, also private, uh, tree areas such as in Little Lees Woods or other locations. Um, or assessment of their health, recommendations for management of them, et cetera. There's a question as to whether the work that comes down of that could inform this ordinance or have it a separate ordinance, if we call it a tree ordinance. Section on elm trees and species trees as well as our forested areas that we care. We want it to be one, one enchilada with a couple of sections in it, that's one way to do it. Or maybe two different ordinances.
Get, get us some options.
And, yeah, I mean, the Elm Tree Committee at this point would, would be interested in just becoming the tree committee. Then that.
No, personally, personally. I, I'm not just to begin, the tree committee and dealing with forested.
Okay.
I really think we should focus on.
Well, why don't.
What's at hand here, the Elm Tree and the streetscape.
Well, then why, sort of use, send us the recommendation. Thank you.
Okay.
Mark.
Maybe just to segue into the, uh, board decision.
As long as it's done in thirteen minutes.
It'll be done in two minutes. We, we have, there are pending amendments made to the zoning ordinance. Pending amendments made to the historic preservation, uh, ordinance. We submitted those last year or almost a year. We've seen no action. Can you please tell us what happened to that?
The planning, the planning were voted in. After we, I don't worry about this. And they were based on the state.
Get back to, but we will. Get back to you. Okay.
Okay, I have a couple, a couple, a quick thing and one a little bit harder. Uh, Derek, uh, it would be great if we reach out to the Maine Food Truck Association to, um, let them know that we're, that we're, we're, we're looking for.
I did that already on Facebook. So here's the thing, there's something mentions the Maine Food Truck Association. I can't find an actual address. I found a Facebook group, I already posted on there once. But there's another one that I think.
The woman who ran the ice cream last year.
Yeah, she's a member of it.
She, she's the one who told me about it.
Yeah, so I actually put some, because she liked the post and I said, uh, yeah, I could probably find it. So I already posted something, I want to do it again, um, because I told them, contact town clerk to sign up for.
Okay.
For weeks.
So that just might, you know, it'd be great to, by the spring if we get some people.
But in their info, they talk about how they're gonna create a webpage and everything, but I hadn't found it yet.
Okay, uh, the second thing is just a big concern of mine. I just, I just want to raise it because it's, it's really, you know, we've got the Jim Jennings building for sale. We have TNC as president. And, you know, I just, I just want to, my fear is that if someone bought TNC and turned it into a mini mart and it just becomes, uh, you know, that, like, like, that could be really, really have an impact on the town. And secondly, you know, if someone bought Jim's building and, you know, didn't care about uh, the retail or didn't, wasn't thinking, you know, they were thinking only about themselves and not about the town. I mean, those two buildings, if they fell into the wrong hands, would have a, a huge impact in the quality of life here. And, you know, I know it's a very, very sensitive issue, kind of, you know, how does a town deal with these things? I may cite you those articles about that, 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 that area in Vermont, but it, it's, it's a, it's a great concern to me. I'm not sure how we deal with it, but I just think like, I think we need to talk about it and, and, you know, to explore options, you know, uh, because it, it just would have such a, such a detrimental impact if both those businesses, um, weren't in line with the, the future of Kastin.
One of the articles that you sent, the dissent was about, I think, people. Like, the whole town went in together.
Exactly.
And, and everybody chipped in to buy this.
There was a general store in Vermont that had been there forever. The couple, the couple retired and they had the business for sale, nobody bought it. Everybody loved the store and I don't know the end result, but the community got together and basically bought the building and, and found an operator. Um, and, you know, I, I don't think, I don't think we're far from a discussion like that.
Isn't that like the Colonial Theater in Belfast?
Exactly. Or, or the, the theater in Duffport.
Robert has already heard this from earlier this week, but Dan speaks to your point. Um, you're probably aware, it came out in the president's letter last week, the golf course is considering the purchase of a house at State Street. Almost for the money that the golf course is paying for State Street, they could look at buying and having forty units in the variety of them. And then overseeing the continuation. So I was a little disappointed when that, that went under contract. And the discussion wasn't public amongst the golf club members. So that maybe that, that issue could have been.
No, I know, but listen, we can't, we, we don't have any control over what they do in the golf, per se, of their own board. But I think, I think that, you know, we need, I, I mean, the first thing is I almost feel like we should have, uh, uh, whether we have it upstairs, we just have a discussion, like, we're, we're, you know, these buildings are for sale and we want to, we want to, we want to do it best for the town. I don't know, I mean, I, I, again, not, I'm not sure, I just, I just.
I'm trying to figure out.
No, I mean, I think we need to do something.
Mark.
What I would consider is why don't you ask Todd, um, Todd's last name? Todd Toby to come in and sit with you and say, Todd, this is what we're thinking about. You know, this could become a certain. Right, which is what you were talking about, you know, or an Irving kind of.
Imagine it's an, an Irving gas station.
It would be awful. But, but I think having a conversation with him about what the town would like to see, you know. And, and ask Jim Jennings to come in and have a conversation so that he can filter, you know, his thinking when he, when he's got an offer. And we've already seen.
Yeah.
There are some properties that have changed hands, uh, not for the betterment of the town. And all we need is go over for it.
So Derek, is that?
Twelve minutes.
We have a, a, a recommendation on, do we, are we, how do we do it?
I don't know. It's really.
Do we add a casting community?
That's, I mean, that's, that's.
I don't.
It's just difficult dealing with that because you have, if somebody's buying it, then you buy it. Now, the, uh, the alternative, we're talking about the town buying, that's definitely some public outreach that you'd need to discuss. But then we start becoming landlords, which is a fine line there, because you're really taking that stuff off the tax front. So you gotta hope that you just get business people that, that buy these properties and they continue to use them for what they are now. And you could easily get Irving or whoever to buy them. You'd have to control what it looks like if they talked about redoing.
There are plenty of businesses and we don't have to look at Kastin, we can look outside. An important piece of property in town gets bought. And, I mean, and then, I mean, I, 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 I look at the other option and let's just look at the ALMO. I mean, I don't know the history of it, but I mean, what an asset that is for, for Bucksport, you know? And apparently it was an old building that they were knocked down or something. And some people got together and I think it's a nonprofit, you know? But like, like, you know, that, that is a, you know, a cultural element in, in Bucksport. And it's just a wonder, it's, it's, I mean, we love going there. And, and I just, it, it just scares me to think what could happen, you know?
We can, we can facilitate a conversation, maybe get people thinking.
That's what I'm saying.
It comes down to what the town's people want, how they want to.
So, so when I was in Bucksport, I don't know if you guys are familiar, sending your postcards or not, but the Lost Kitchen where that is in Freedom or Liberty.
Yeah.
There's actually a documentary about that old building. It used to be daycare and everything else, they were already.
You're talking about the original, the original Lost Kitchen in Belfast.
No, I'm not about the one that's in Freedom or Liberty, you know, one of those paper towns. Literally that was an old mill building on the side of a lake that was, you could see through it. And so developers came in and actually renovated that building. We're, we're breathing new life into it and it's kind of a good transition.
Yeah, but that, but that's, that's a once in a billion phenomenon that someone becomes internationally famous in a restaurant in a little tiny town in Maine.
But she gets the credit for that, but it was a different developer that.
The developers came to her and asked her, asked her to, you know, when she closed the Belfast, to move there.
Right.
And I'm sure it was some kind of sweetheart deal, and I'm sure in the end everybody won.
Right, but I'm saying that's the kind of little magic thing that goes on there. And, um, there's, it's similar to that there, but we actually watched that video about how that happened and everything else. And I forget if the developer there was there or not, but.
Okay, we, we have three, sorry, we have three minutes. Amy, did you have any?
I do not have anything.
Okay, I want you guys to get your wildfire meeting on time. But I would like to propose to the select board that we do not have a work session on December twenty.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
We wait until.
Yeah. And just to update, Julie's having a surgery on January second. We don't know how long the recovery will take, January, January, I can zoom in, but, but until, until, um, until she's able to walk, I won't be here.
Okay, so, but you'll be available on Zoom.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Monday, twenty third.
Oh, Monday the twenty third.
Want to come in on Sunday the twenty second?
Yeah, no, let's come in either. Let's do Monday, no, no work session on Monday the twenty third, thank you.
And then the next meeting will be?
Uh, January sixth, I believe.
Yeah, okay, so the next, the next, the next select, so basically one.
No, no, the next select meeting is the sixteenth, the next.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just giving away all.
No, what about the thirtieth?
No, we don't have a meeting, but, but we will have probably a talk with Karen. We probably will have a, some sort of a Zoom meeting, uh, at some point around twenty seven to vote on warrants, not a couple of warrants.
Okay. Which I do know.
Yeah, you can, thank you.
Some reason I thought New Year's was gonna play for something too, or I don't know why. But that's not, New Year's based on Wednesday.
Yeah, Karen was thinking twenty seven, just in case there were warrants.
Okay. Derek, you ready for us tomorrow night? Am I ready for you? All I have to do is come and all I have to do is launch for the Zoom. There's food, there's sand.
Virgins was coming in?
No.
Usually when they do.
Food, sis, webinars. Because all planning boards, blood. Mostly listening. Eventually, I think our gets our point from it. But today, today and Friday, I think we sent the. Yeah, I gotta look at, I gotta see what that sent me, like sent me million things on this. None of it is. So, hold on here.